Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the May ninth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from the deputy commissioner of elections is to receive the appointment of Micae Lang to fill the vacancy of the office of WIT Director District One. Item five from the county treasurer includes A. Approval of resolution for a tax abatement for Lake Forest MHC. B. Approval of resolution for a tax abatement for guest home sales. C. Approval of resolution for an abatement of dream homes. D. Approval to refund request of for overpayment of taxes for parcel ending in zero two two in the amount of five thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars. E. Approval of resolution for a tax abatement for Woodbury County Iowa parcels ending in zero zero nine and zero one zero. And F. Approval of resolution for a tax abatement for Woodbury County Iowa parcels ending in zero zero one. Ending in three zero 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 one, zero 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 one, zero 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 two, and zero 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 four. Item six from Board Administration includes A. Approval of lifting tax suspension for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Item B is approval of resolution thanking and commending Jennifer Johnson for her years of service with Woodbury County. Item C is approval of resolution thanking and commending Stephanie Powell for her years of service with Woodbury County. Item seven from the county auditor includes A. Approval of liquor license application for Correctionville Golf Club in Correctionville. And B. Approval of liquor license application for Back Pocket Brewing LLC in Mowville. Number eight from Human Resources is approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And number nine from Secondary Roads is approval of permit to work in the right of way for Jeff Stewart. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item ten is approval of an appointment to the Civil Service Commission. With the untimely passing of Flora Lee, of course, there is a need to appoint for this commission. It's composed of three. The code does require no more than two of the same party. One current commissioner is Republican, one current is a Democrat, and so we're good with whoever the board selects from these three. We have... Let me scroll down. We had quite the long consent agenda. We have Don Norton. And we have Angie Thunderman. And we have... Mr. Trout. Are any of these applicants here today? And we... Mr. Lloyd Trout, excuse me. So we won't conduct interviews. Does the board have any initial questions on the process? Are we comfortable making a selection today? I believe we are, but don't want to preempt.
We can make a decision then.
Okay. Is the board okay if I start off with my thoughts?
Sure.
We have an opportunity to appoint someone that is not a current or former county employee. And I think because that was the case with the prior appointee, it would bring some strength and... And, you know, overall, you know, help to the commission since two of them are current or former county employees. I note that Mr. Trout has the endorsement of one of the current commissioners and brings experience from active duty Marine Corps and Department of Justice, US Marshal Service, which is a unique perspective that's not really replicated elsewhere on the commission. And also being an out somewhat of an outsider to county unemployment, I think is something that was good in that seat, so... Do we have any other... Any other notes of support or thoughts?
I would echo those same three things. I think that that's it's helpful to have diversity along those lines. I think the Marine Corps active duty experience is one that's laudable in addition to the Marshals. So I would concur with those sentiments.
It's always good to get along with the US Marshal Services, you know, when we're looking to expand where we're looking to expand in our counties. I'll make that motion for Mr. Trout.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Bittenger to appoint Lloyd C. Trout Jr. to the Civil Service Commission. Any other further discussion? Thanks to everyone for putting their name forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. We are at our 4:40 PM set time, which is item eleven from Board Administration, includes A. For action. Public hearing on the FY twenty-four county maximum property tax dollars. Dennis, you want to summarize briefly why we're doing this?
The reason we're doing this is we had a publication did not get published in a rural newspaper, so according to law, we have to have all publications in there. This was not discovered until two months afterwards when we got the bill. Went back, looked, it was not there. We did send an email. We know they got the email, so it's really there on them not getting in the paper. So with that said, we're required to come back and just do this formality, holding a public hearing. Also, then we'll go to item B, and I'll say something there. But the numbers have not changed. It's all the same that you already approved.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we are in a public hearing. And knowing that there is no material change and this is procedural, is there anyone to speak during the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is approval of resolution of FY twenty-four county maximum property tax dollars unchanged.
No information only. This was passed already on a five oh vote.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Yes, Mr. Taylor.
So Dennis, can you let us know what are our next steps in terms of are we going to have to do more procedural motions in the future? Can you just remind us?
Yes, the other item we have to do is redo our public hearing for our adopted budget. We have to go through that process there and then adopt the resolution, just the same flow through that we've already done. Again, it's all formality. We do send the notices out.
So how many more meetings are we...
Uh, one.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have all the public hearings be one time, approve them all at one time. And we already know what the votes were passed, so I'll say, you know, what the votes are in case somebody wants to change.
Thank you.
All right. We are a little bit ahead of our 4:45 PM set time. Is this set time just for the public hearing? Joshua, can we receive?
I think you could. Mr. Malloy's item is a very quick item, I believe.
Okay.
Would appreciate if we could squeeze that in.
Sure thing. We'll skip ahead to item fourteen from WCICC. This is approval of Sidwell Parcel Fabric Migration Agreement. I have a list of a hundred questions for you.
I only have ninety-nine responses, so... For the last year or two, we've been working together collectively between the two assessors offices, city and county, to Ford and what we call Parcel Fabric Editor to it's a migration to a new standard. And Pat's office, the recorder's office facilitates those combinations and splits. So we have to get that data from A to B. And I want to thank Mr. Whitman for his efforts on looking through the agreement. It was exceptional. I mean, he took a hard stance as far as having concessions with the company to make sure the county was in its most favorable position.
I'll move the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Bittenger to approve the agreement. Any discussion, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So these funds are already pre-programmed and budgeted for the thirty-nine thousand two forty-five.
Yes, there's forty thousand in the budget, and each entity, the county's in for ten thousand.
Thank you.
I think you owe Josh, though.
I always owe Josh, so thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. We're at our 4:45 PM set time. This is item twelve from Planning and Zoting, headed by Daniel Priestley. Do we have someone on the phone?
Uh, yeah, William Doherty with Mid American Energy.
Just for the board's information, I got a request ahead of twenty-four hours before this meeting, and I approved Mr. Doherty's participation electronically. If there's any questions during the public hearing or any comments under the three minutes you'd like to provide, I would say probably at the end of our discussion, so he'll be on standby. So item A is to receive the updated county staff report concerning the proposed amendment to ordinance number fifty-six.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Dan Priestley presenting an updated staff report that includes further communications from some cities such as Danbury, Hornet, as well as some minutes from the Conservation Board. From last after last week, I guess Conservation Board didn't map, and they've updated the recommendation to one mile from the conservation areas. So that's kind of the big monumental change from the report, so that's pretty much it for me.
And for the sake of the public, what was it before?
It was a half mile and four times the height of the tower, so it transformed to one mile. And also within the report, we did add some additional data as far as the mapping to show the updated setbacks from the conservation areas. So that would be kind of the second to last page within the report, too.
Questions, sir? Dan?
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor to receive the updated county staff report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item B now is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend portions of Woodbury County Ordinance number fifty-six, amendments to modify section six point one A. Wind turbines setback requirements and to increase certain setback requirements to the ordinance regulating commercial wind energy conversion systems in unincorporated Woodbury County. Nothing further at this time? Okay. Before I forget, I got a call from a constituent, and I said, you know, he couldn't be here, and I said I would relay his public comments, so that's all I'm doing right now. Mr. Daniel Hare wanted to convey that he supports a five mile setback for the first portion and a one mile for county conservation. And also was going to ask the board how we could address communities like Climbing Hill and Luton, which are not incorporated, and how to protect their economic development should they choose to expand in the future. With that, if you'd like to speak during the public hearing, now is your chance. You'll have three minutes, and it will be timed.
Laurie Philippi, Anthony, Iowa, twenty-one twenty-seven Cassuth Avenue. I'd like to submit to the board for record a certified enrollment of Lawton Bronson School District.
I'd move to receive.
Second.
Motion to receive by Taylor, second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. For point of information to the parliamentarian, in the future, can we receive all of these after the item at hand if we get several in the public hearing? Can we receive them all at the end?
Per individual, we indicate which individual gave that item.
Okay.
And they're all logged separately on the website.
Okay.
So individual would be good.
All right, thank you.
We can, if you'd like, project them with the document reader if you want when we receive items.
If he's going to refer to them, I would say yes. I only got in the future also for the public, please make sure the clerk has a copy of what you're handing to us, because we're considering a document. It's a public document now, so go ahead and start his time over.
Okay. I'll keep this within three minutes. I know Keith is watching. I'd like to comment on the two mile setback from a incorporated town's boundary for a wind turbine. It is a darn good start. Until one gets built. And then now what you've just done, you've limited that town's growth just to a mile and a half. So just comment on Mr. Dan Hare's suggestion, and then there's others as well, to include myself. Five miles makes perfect sense for lots of reasons, and if you think it through, there's no argument. And so the next comments here that I'm going to make, I don't mean to downtalk any other town, but sometimes the words I choose aren't really correct in other people's views, but you just got to say them right and then take the heat afterwards. So I feel the sweetheart of Siouxland's bedroom communities is Woodbury County. In Woodbury County is Lawton Bronson. And the reason I say that, it's because it's so close. That does not discredit other small towns by any means. Their wind turbine setbacks should be the same, in some cases greater than the two miles, as we've heard numerous times for now, we're looking at five. And Mr. Wong had mentioned the unincorporated towns such as Luton and Climbing Hill should also be allowed to grow. They should also be protected. But in regards to the document that I gave the county board here, in the last ten years, Lawton Bronson School District has grown twelve percent, exactly twelve percent. Current student population is roughly seven hundred students. Over the next forty years, which is the length of a Mid American turbine contract, Lawton Bronson School District will have one thousand students. This is at the current twelve percent growth compounded annually. And there's no reason, no reason to doubt this growth rate could be much higher. Having said that, if you look at what SIMCO, this is very interesting for me. I did a lot of research on this group. I forgot they even existed in Sioux City. Siouxland Interstate Metropolitan Planning Council, their projects, they have a transportation route that's currently planned out to twenty forty-five. It's twenty-two years from now. I don't think it's far enough. Maybe they have an updated version. I don't know. But what is SIMCO? I know you folks on the board know, but for those of us out here in the audience don't know. SIMCO is the Siouxland Interstate Metropolitan Planning Council, started back in the sixties. It's one of the oldest planning councils in the country. What is their purpose? They have many purposes, but for today's meeting, I just want to spell this out. In regards to agriculture, they want to preserve the rural character of the county. They want to protect agricultural land, wildlife habitat, outdoor recreational land uses, expand access to safe, high-quality housing, access to family-friendly activities and cultural opportunities in rural Woodbury County to support, to support sustainable...
Please wrap it up.
Okay. Anyways, so it goes on and on. They talk about a sliding scale. I want to explain this real quick. It'll take me thirty seconds and I'm done. A sliding scale zoning preserves the availability of agricultural lands for farming, thus the agricultural base of this community by constraining non-agricultural development and land uses to designated areas. As mentioned before to this board, this is nothing farm about wind turbines. We're talking about industrial sites, okay? And so just to wrap this up, you can't sustain and grow a community for all if you give a small group of individuals the right to do whatever they want on their land. That will mostly definitely impact the future growth of Woodbury County. It would put them into a very negative spiral. The gravity of our decisions will affect this community in ways we can't even imagine. So I guess in closing, what I'd like to say is that when we plan, I think two miles is too close. I think five miles is plenty. And I think when we plan twenty years out, it needs to be forty years out. That's what Mid America is having these contracts signed for. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name and address, please.
My name's Chuck Holker. I live at three oh seven Brookside Drive, Kingsley, Iowa. I'm a landowner with my son in Banner Township, Section one and eleven. Our families lived on this property for four generations. My son lives there now, so we've got a lot invested in this wind turbine project. My son and I visited seven different projects across the state before signing up for the Siouxland Wind Project, and that was a year and a half ago. All of a sudden, we find out supervisors have already addressed this turbine issue and changed setback distance by doubling the distance that other projects across the state use. I guess I'm wondering how many more times will we need to change the law or make new rules because someone's not happy about something? And we can't please everybody all the time. It's just, it just... We don't need more government. We want less. And I guess my question gets to being, what's next? If somebody puts up a grain leg, is that going to be too high for what the rules are? Or if a grain bin has drying fans running day and night screaming, then people are going to get upset about that? They talk about trying to control, you know, what are you going to do? Move the elevators out of the small towns? That's their lifeblood. I'm tired of having to defend our rights as property owners to do what we need to do. I think people on both sides of this issue can agree. We don't need more government. We want less. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for making the drive. Anyone else?
Bob Fritzmeier, and I my address is two nine three three Leach Avenue here in Sioux City. Good afternoon. I'm here in support of Mr. Doherty's statement, which we'll hear in a little bit. And I do support the position that Mid American Energy has taken to find some compromise to bring the setback to one mile. And I think Mr. Doherty will give, you know, some of his facts behind that. But I'm going to give, you know, some of my opinions here, and one of my opinions, actually one of the facts that I've looked up on the internet is that there is an organization called the North American Platform Against Wind Power. And in my opinion, they are funded, bankrolled by the huge oil companies. And unfortunately, I think they spread misinformation, and some of that may be sparking some of the fears that have been expressed by at least one of the speakers here. But in the past, Iowa has enjoyed bipartisan support for wind power. In Congress, we have former, a former senator who represented us, Tom Harkin, and also a former Iowa representative, Steve King, who both supported wind power. Here in northwest Iowa, there's a farm family, Daryl Hawke and his family, that lived near Primgar. And they allowed wind turbines on their land, their family's farm. He said that he and his wife were receiving almost twenty thousand dollars a year in lease payments for those turbines. They live in O'Brien County, and there alone, where Primgar is located, the wind farm employs thirty workers. So Mr. Hawke said that actually those are thirty young men and women who stay in the community. They go to church. They pay their taxes. They shop there. They send their kids to school. They buy their groceries. We have a statement, or I have a statement rather, that I gleaned from the, it's from a newspaper story. It was in twenty seventeen, but I think it's relevant to today. And it's a quote from Bill Furman, who was the CEO of Mid American Energy at that time. And he said that there's no perfect way to make electricity. He said, "We figure out the energy resource that has the lowest impact on the environment, the lowest impact on customers, and the lowest costs." The vast majority of people who live in the rural areas, when they see the opportunities with jobs, investment, and taxes, they want the minimum power projects. So I'm hopeful, and I have confidence in you, in the supervisors, that you'll make a fair decision and be willing to compromise on behalf of the people here in Woodbury County and business people, too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Doyle Turner, twenty-seven thirty-eight Two Hundred Street. First off, I'd like to make a comment to the gentleman's comment that we want less government. I concur with that one thousand percent. And if we have less government, we will have less subsidy for wind turbines that are not efficient. This is a highly subsidized industry that we want less government involvement in. To Mr. Philippi's comment, Woodbury County needs to grow. We do need more electrical power. I myself would like to see Mid American give up on the wind turbines and move on to something at Port Neal that can give us real power and less of a footprint within our county. We have three communities in this county that over the fast last fifty years have shown growth. We can't count on Sioux City to grow for some reason. They have had a negative growth in the last fifty years. But Sergeant Bluff, Lawton, and Mowville have shown positive growth. Mowville and Lawton are extremely vulnerable to these wind turbines when it comes to their growth. Lawton can only grow to the north. Mowville would like to grow north and south. But these wind turbines would definitely hinder that. So when you look at limiting the growth of those two communities, you're basically capping the growth for the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak?
Dan Heisel, Office of the Woodbury County Conservation Board. I'm here on behalf of myself and the Conservation Board, as you know, in our minutes at our last board meeting. After the discussion with Ms. Doherty last week after the meeting, he made it clear that they weren't interested in putting windmills in the Little Sioux River Valley near our wildlife areas or our parks because of the studies they have to do for birds, and that they weren't going to put them in there. And then we asked him about a piece of property where they had bought it and used it. They had not bought, but they've got the use. Excuse me. And he said, "Oh, that was just to do bird counts in wildlife." Find out that that landowner, all they were worried about when they were talking to him was how many windmills they could put on that property. That is why the Conservation Board and myself are concerned and want to support and move and have the supervisors move the setback from one half mile to one mile on parks and conservation areas. I think we're being misled. Wish Will was here tonight. I would like to talk to him again. I hope he calls me. But he stood in front of Mr. Nelson and another landowner and told me directly that they were not going to build in the Little Sioux River Wildlife Valley next to parks because of the wildlife and the studies and birds. of the wildlife and the studies and birds. And then when we asked about the property that they had, it was for doing bird studies. Well, that landowner, all they were worried about is how many windmills they could put on the property. So I think there's a little disinformation going on. So we urge and hope that you move that back to a mile for us because those wildlife areas and parks, they're economic development for Woodbury County. As the town of Correctionville has pointed out to you, huge impact for them on Little Sioux Park. Mowville's looking at Midway, which is north of Mowville. Kingsley's looking at Midway. They've got master plans that they're wanting to grow together and use that as a central point, trails, connections, and stuff. So I don't want to take up any more time, but we support moving that to one mile for parks and wildlife areas. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Mr. Scott Mitchell?
Scott Mitchell, Mayor of Hornick. We discussed this, and I discussed with council members. My biggest concern is, is if you go with two miles, you limit, you might not limit Hornick's growth, but you limit a lot of the towns in Woodbury County to grow. You push that to five, maybe make it make it's two miles, two to five, is the city has a say in that if it goes there. You kind of got the same thing, like if an elevator or a business moves out of town within two miles of town, now the board has that discussion with the city. So maybe that's the way to look at it. But you take a town like, say, like Sloan or Selix that could grow, you know, if it's within that five-mile circle, that would hurt them in the future. So, you know, I'm all for the two miles. The city would really appreciate the five, but with its specification on that two to five, that's an area where, you know, the board has that discussion with the people of the city or with the council of the city, you know, to see what their future plan is for the growth. Because you guys don't know, but the city should have a good handle on what their future is for growth. Because the board sits here and sets it, and then limits them towns for that growth in the future, that doesn't help our towns, our little towns grow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Dougherty is going to give his comments over the phone.
Thank you, Supervisor Ung. Yeah, I just want to kind of reiterate comments from last week. Mid-American has recommended to look at the one-mile setback from city limits as opposed to the two miles that was recommended by the zoning board, along with the original half-mile setback. I didn't have time. I was unaware of the new recommendation from the Conservation Board. That's something that I will gladly take back and discuss internally and issue new comments on that new recommendation for the board's consideration. But regarding the setback from city limits, just like to reiterate, the board should have taken a consideration, striking a balance between landowner rights and respecting municipalities' ability to grow into the future. Ultimately, those areas of unincorporated Woodbury County are currently zoned in the county ordinance. And the extraterritorial ability that's stated by Iowa code doesn't come into play in this situation. Therefore, we believe that, you know, landowners should have a say in what they are able to do with their property to an extent with respectable setbacks that do allow municipalities to grow well into the future. And that's all I have for comments.
Thank you. Last round. Any one to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item C is to conduct and approve the second reading of the ordinance amendment.
I'll move the second reading.
As is? Is there a second? Going once, going twice?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Um, I guess I would like to see us adopt the one mile from the conservation areas in regards to where the cities are at. If I understand Mr. Mitchell correctly, that Hornick is a two-mile minimum, and you're fine, or the town would accept if we wanted to go past that? Is that kind of what your council? Okay.
The thing was, there is a two-mile minimum, and then the two to five, you allow municipalities to have a say in that, the cities to have a say in that, because the cities...
They're going to have to come to the microphone.
Thing was, to have the two miles, and then to have the two to five, would be the cities would have a say in that of the three miles. Because you take a city that is going to potentially be growing, that would be an issue for them. But you take a city that maybe wouldn't grow as much, let's say Hornick, maybe it wouldn't be a biggest issue. So leave that three miles there where the board would work with the city to make sure that's not going to hurt their future growth. That was my...
Yes.
Because where I was going with that was, Dan Berry also said the same thing, that they wanted a minimum of two, but they wanted to be part of any discussions if it was past that, that they would be in favor, especially if larger towns like Mowville, Correctionville, or Lawton were pursuing that. I understand Mowville has a meeting tomorrow night, so it'll be interesting to see what they come next week with their recommendation. Lawton, in my conversations with Mayor Jesse Pedersen, was that minimum two miles for them was kind of what they'd like to see. So, I mean, I think we're on the right track there. You know, maybe three is something we look at for that as maybe a compromise. But, I mean, we got five towns that have already, their councils have already voted, given us direction, and we've got, I think, two more coming. So I think that the process has been very thorough. You've got a lot of elected officials that are weighing in on this and giving us guidance, which I think is great. But I'd like to see that at least the conservation area moved to one mile for sure, and I would like to hear more discussion on the city limits.
So how are we going to define conservation area? Because when you look at the map that was given to us, there's more conservation areas than towns.
It's defined, and Dan, you probably may have that on the ordinance, but it's defined in the ordinance itself what a conservation area is, but it is defined...
If you're looking at increasing that to a mile, then every city to five or select cities to five, when we've done comprehensive plans as a board of supervisors working with Simcoe, you know, we looked at long-term growth with all these cities. None were going to expand five miles beyond their borders. I just think at what point do you just say, screw it and ban wind altogether, you know? And that way, Mid-American just stops investing money in research or trying to do the work. I mean, you're either giving them hope or you're giving them no hope. So, I don't know. I think it's ridiculous to keep changing those numbers every week we have a discussion. I think we did thorough work with the numbers we have. And again, I was the one that suggested maybe we look at increasing these for cities way back when. But I don't know. It's a board discussion. I think we have good numbers, but if, you know, you guys feel otherwise, then let's make your recommendations and put, you know, put up where you think it should be.
Stuart. I'm supportive tonight of the second reading for one reason only, and that that moves the ball downfield in terms of conservation. The cities originally seemed like they weighed in at two miles, and that made some sort of legal rational sense in terms of extraterritorial review. My worry is that if we go to five miles and it's deemed by the courts as a moratorium, that they may overturn that and challenge that. When we have Mowville's planning and zoning member saying there's very little chance that future growth will necessitate expanding the city limits even one mile, adding two miles in each direction would result in a five-by-five-mile area of 25 square miles, and I'd support one from the setback. I think two miles protects some of that growth. I don't like these things any better than anybody else. But I think for the long term, if we're going to have these things stand up to scrutiny, we need to have a rational legal basis. And to me, the extraterritorial review that exists right now is that. I do appreciate the Conservation Board weighing in, and that's why we do these hearings the way we do them, not just one time, not just two times, but three times. And so tonight, unless there's something compelling next week and the next hearing, I'm supportive right now of this because I do think it moves the ball downfield.
I'm, of course, supportive of moving the ordinance forward as well. We may have slight disagreements on the board about what's the right number, as there is certainly in the audience. But we're doing, we're moving in the direction of the requests of our constituents and our communities. So I'm pleased with the process overall. I could support a one-mile setback from conservation, you know, given that recommendation. But if it's going to cause the second reading to fail, Joshua, I apologize for the off-the-cuff question, but what's the impact if there's, you know, an impasse on the second reading? Does it get deferred until you can complete three readings, or is it nixed?
At that point, the ordinance, that specific amendment would be dead. You'd have to renotice it.
You'd have to what?
You'd have to go through the notice and public hearing process again for a future amendment.
Okay. So that's the importance of what the original language is, is really, that needs to be supported all the way, or the amendment needs to be supported through the third reading or upon the third reading to avoid starting over the process. Is that right?
Well, just to clarify, so if the board is not able to agree tonight on the second reading language, then the amendment process would stop at that point. If the board wanted to make adjustments to the setback, I think it's noticed in such a way that you could increase the setback in something different than what was initially set out. I do agree with Jeremy that there have been reasons put forward for the two-mile radius, and that's also the recommendation of the zoning commission. So the board can choose something different than that, but I think the board should make specific findings as to why a, something different than that is the appropriate setback to choose. And again, if the board does that, it makes it stronger if there's any sort of challenge to that setback later on.
Was your question procedurally?
Yeah, I just want to know if it jeopardizes the entire hearing process.
So procedurally, it could fail. You could move a motion to reconsider, move an amendment on the distance, and then vote again. Correct? Procedurally.
Correct. For this, yes. This specific motion doesn't have to pass, and a new motion could be made. But ultimately, if the board fails to come to a consensus and approve a second reading tonight, then going forward, there wouldn't be a third reading or adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you. Comments?
I'll be voting in favor of it. I do agree, I want less government, but there is, there are zoning issues, ordinance issues. Even going back to the founding, if you look in Boston, you dig into some of the history even there, in the beginning, they had issues with people trying to do whatever they wanted, and there were still laws and things that governed what you couldn't and cannot do, even back in the beginning of our country. So I do think we found a good balance between what's fair for private land use, you know, landowners' rights versus protecting growth of the county. So I would vote in favor of it. I think increasing the conservation where it's at now, I think, is the right thing to do as well. So I would vote for it, where we're at. I think going beyond that, my, as Joshua said, do we have good standing to prove that and so on? But I think two miles would be enough to, in essence, protect the cities at the moment.
Sorry, you're in favor of the two mile and the one mile?
Yeah, two mile, one mile, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, two mile, one mile.
I believe it would be in order to entertain an amendment to the motion, unless I'm hearing differently from the parliamentarian or attorney.
I think the original motion was for the two mile and one mile as is.
It's as it is in the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, then. Any further discussion? Looks like we're, no further issues? Questions?
I mean, basically, the only parcels near that area that are already recorded are already basically nixed by the current boundaries. So you're really technically not changing anything anyway, which I'm just saying.
Any further discussion?
And just for the sake of the public, there will be another opportunity...
Yes, thank you. Never fear, there will be a third reading of our third shot at this ordinance. And again, the setback from conservation is one mile. Is that correct? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Thank you. Item 13 from Summit Carbon Solutions for Information. Mr. Riley Gibson is here to give us a project update.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us again. Yeah, gonna change it up a little bit today and give you all a little PowerPoint presentation. I'm not going to take up too much of your time. My name's Riley Gibson. I work for Turnkey Logistics and represent Summit Carbon Solution. Behind me is Senior Project Manager Eric Welch, and hopefully together, we can answer some questions. But I have wielded the power of this mouse, and hopefully I don't mess anything up over here, but I'm sure I'll be told if I do. I have some handouts for you, if you don't mind, if I pass them out to you.
Move to receive.
Second.
Next by Taylor, second by Nelson to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Yeah, so today, we just wanted to take a little opportunity to address some common misconceptions that we've encountered over the year and a half or so, or multiple years of going about the process of building this project. So I'll go through it pretty quick. In the handout, there's also an infographic that kind of goes through the PowerPoint a little bit about the misconceptions. So let's see, I think, oh, here. I can see it. We were worried I wouldn't be able to see the change slide thing. Okay. So this will be regarding Summit Carbon Solutions project, but also CO2 pipelines in general. One of the first misconceptions that we've ran into is CO2 pipelines are not regulated. This, today, there's over 5,000 miles of CO2 pipeline in the United States, and they've been in operation for over 40 years. Throughout that time, these systems have been extremely regulated by state and federal entities, and we'll go through a few of those. Oh, I've lost my, oh, it's a lot. You don't mind changing the slide, do you? Okay. We've gone over this a little bit, but PHMSA is our federal regulatory body. We're specifically regulated through Title 49 of CFR, Part 195. There's a 121-page document. It's public knowledge. We encourage anybody who gets an opportunity or who is curious to go through and read it, there's a lot of information in there. We also fall into Part 190, 196, 198, and 199. We're also regulated by the Iowa Utilities Board. We have our public hearing for the Iowa Utilities Board for our state permit in October, or in the October timeframe, so that'll be coming up here pretty quick. So we're specifically regulated through 479B hazardous liquid pipelines and storage facilities. They have the authority to implement controls to protect landowners and tenants from environmental and economic damages. They also permit locations and route of the pipeline for the state. I can just do this. We're also regulated through the Army Corps of Engineers. This is kind of a pretty lengthy one, but we have submitted our Nationwide Permit 58, the utility line activity for water and other substances. That will be included in the handout if you wanted to read about that more. be included in the handout if you wanted to read about that more, but they also work in conjunction with the DNR. We're also regulated by the DNR, as mentioned already. The DNR oversees the stormwater permitting, dewwater, water discharge, and water allocation for the project. Another misconception, and there's also gonna be some easement language in here to kind of back this up. We also have a blank easement that if you haven't got a chance to read, this will be standard across all easements that a landowner would receive when they first begin negotiation with the project. It'll be standard across all easements, but Summit Carbon Solutions will not repair drain tile damages. That's a misconception we've ran into quite a bit in Iowa, drain tile being very elaborate and such an extensive system. We've partnered with Ellingson as our primary drain tile vendor. We're responsible for our, all damage caused during putting the pipeline in, construction phase, operation phase. We're gonna really, we've been really working hard trying to identify drain tile we cross, but say there's an issue, we damaged some tile, we'll have Ellingson there to make a temporary repair, and then as construction moves through, a permanent repair will be done. This will also be an option for a landowner if they have a drain tile company they've used for 50 years. If they want to use that company, we'll pay for that as well. Specific easement language, this is across all easements. This'll be covered in Section Four, the restoration part of the easement. Company shall repair, or if company deems necessary, replace the damaged portion of such tile, terrace, or irrigation system. So it doesn't only include tile, that'll be terraces, or really any irrigation system that we're responsible for repairing. Another misconception, landowners will be unable to acquire liability insurance for the pipeline on their land. We've got this quite a bit. There's pipelines across the United States. Those landowners are still able to get insurance on their private property. They will not need to get insurance on our pipeline. That's Summit's liability. Summit will be responsible for all damages caused by the pipeline. And we can go to the specific language within the easement. That'll be covered in Section Six, the indemnification clause is a bit of a tongue twister, but that basically indemnifies the landowner of all damages caused by the pipeline. So that'll include any loss of property, life, limb, whatever may occur. They're covered for it. Another misconception we run into, the Summit Carbon Solution easement can be sold to another entity that will use the pipeline for something other than CO2. Besides the language in the easement, from an engineering perspective, that's almost impossible to use it for other than CO2. It would be engineered to run CO2 from ethanol plants to be permanently sequestered. So the, the fact that it just cannot be used for really any other thing without being completely re-engineered, but there also is specific language in the easement. We can go to the next slide, which will show Section one A, which is the pipeline easement. In blue, it states within the easement that it's one pipeline per easement, so not multiple, multiple lines, and it can only be used for the transportation of carbon dioxide. So, and that'll be through the lifetime, whether we're sold in the future or bought out by another company, that easement will hold true for that piece of property. So. Some rapid-fire ones, we're almost to the end. So one of the misconceptions is this is the first time Summit Carbon Solutions has built a pipeline, and the experience between our engineers and construction cruises over 250 years in the pipeline industry. So it, Summit Carbon Solutions, the company, is not, but there's hundreds of years of experience in pipelines throughout the company. Another misconception, CO2 pipelines are a new technology, and we stated this earlier, there's over 5,000 miles within just the United States alone, and they've been operational for 40 years, and the technology has improved quite a bit since then as well. Another misconception, the Summit Carbon Solutions pipeline will use an exponential amount of water at capture facilities. We've got this a little bit as of late. This will, at the capture facilities, we're only gonna add a 10% increase in water usage for the ethanol plants. So it's not an exponential amount that, that we've heard a few times. And last slide, and then we'll open it up for questions, if y'all have any. We, we've heard trucking the CO2 is a better transport option than pipeline. Logistically, this isn't really feasible for the amount of CO2 that'll be moving to the sequestration site. There's just not enough transportation available to move that much CO2. And when compared to trucks and rail, pipelines are just significantly safer. And I think current events unfortunately have shown a little bit of that as well. A misconception that Summit Carbon Solution pipeline will be used for enhanced oil recovery. This is another engineering feat that would be very, very hard to tackle, as well as an economic problem, to figure out where, from our sequestration site outside of Bismarck, we're pretty far away from any enhanced oil recovery operations. So in order to move that into an enhanced oil recovery operation from an engineer's standpoint, would be very difficult to do. And economically, it doesn't really make sense. So that will, that won't be an issue. And the one that is most pressing, at least on, on my mind, carbon capture is not critical to maintaining a strong ethanol industry is a misconception we get. So, and I'll just read this one verbatim. According to a study published by the Iowa Renewable Fuels Association, without carbon capture projects, Iowa ethanol production could decrease by 75% by the end of the decade. That'd be nearly 3.5 billion gallons, leading many plants to shut down. Iowa farmers would lose local markets for more than 1 billion bushels of corn annually, and Iowa would realize an eventual decline in revenue from ethanol plants of more than $10 billion. So that'd be some of the economic impacts published by the Iowa Renewable Fuels Association. So, and I think that's, I think that's it. And I don't know how to get out of it, though. So you might have to help me with that. Did y'all have any questions, or?
I just have three of them. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So essentially, according to what you're positing from the Iowa Renewable Fuels Association, without these carbon pipelines, the ethanol industry will be decimated to such a degree that there will only be 25% of current ethanol production in the next 10 years?
It's about doom and, that's pretty doom and gloom, I will admit.
Right. It makes me scared that the ethanol industry is in such a precarious situation right now, that in 10 years' time, without these, basically, there won't be an ethanol industry in Iowa.
Yeah, I think what we're running into, and this is an emerging thing, we kind of touched on it initially when we came in, and it's part of the reason for this project is these low-carbon markets that are emerging. Canada has adopted a low-carbon market, California has adopted a low-carbon market, and this is gonna be a growing trend. I think we're gonna see it pop up in legislation quite a bit, where you have to have a certain CI score to sell into these markets and still make a profit. So in order to sell into a market that has this new adopted low-carbon market, they have to purchase, I believe, carbon credits. So eventually, they're gonna end up tapping into the red if that's, you know, big ethanol markets. The Iowa ships its ethanol to and sells very profitably, and has for a long time, is gonna start, it's gonna start eating away at it pretty, pretty, pretty heavily.
And we did address government intrusion, and this seems to be it on steroids. But my, my second question is, you have over 472 miles now signed a voluntary easement. What is the total miles that are needed, and which, which would leave a remaining balance? And so that's kind of a two-part question.
Yeah, let's see. So, yeah, for the state of Iowa, right now, we're at 69% of our easements. So that equates to 472 easement miles acquired. I'm not exactly sure of the exact miles that we need, but currently, the 472 miles would equate for 69% of the state.
Okay, so you're looking at roughly needing 200-some miles through forced annex, well, not annexation, but through the Iowa Utilities Board forcing landowners with eminent domain. Is that essentially 200, 250 miles would need to be?
Yeah, and we're, I don't, and we're gonna continue negotiations, and this has been, it's been moving really well lately. We've had a few counties hit 100% or 90%, and so I know the negotiations are gonna continue. So I, our goal has been, from the beginning, to continue negotiations all the way through the process. So we hope, we're making really good progress in that. When you're looking at a number like 69%, it doesn't seem like a lot, but in those 472 miles, there's thousands of landowners and agreements that we've made to get to that number. So we're hoping we don't have to use any of it. You know, our goal is to keep negotiating. That's been going really well, and we're very happy to be where we're at, so.
And my last one, Matt Brown, I'm sorry. So with that, one of our many concerns this hearing from landowners that are worried about the prospect at this juncture, if there's several hundred or 250 miles that are gonna need to be forced, I just want to make sure you're aware, Woodbury County has engaged in counsel, legal counsel with Tim Whipple, and then joined as of today, as one of the seven counties in intervening in the IUB process, on behalf of not only the county, but the landowners. I didn't know if you were aware of that. So I just wanted to make, as that topic has come up today, just to make that publicly known.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think that's well within the rights of the county. You know, we're gonna continue to work with you. You know, you could have a sign out the door that says Riley's not allowed to come in here, and you know, we're...
No, you're always welcome, for sure.
Yeah, and we wanna work with you through the process, and, you know, we understand everybody's trying to fill this out together, you know, and, and there's a process involved with everything. So we're not gonna throw our hands up and put our pins down. You know, we wanna keep working with you and give you the best information we have possible at the time, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
I've got a few questions. You stated that there's currently 5,000 miles of CO2 pipelines in the United States, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because you were talking about the safety of those 5,000. FEMSA estimates that there are 2.6 million miles of pipelines in the United States. So that would mean that carbon pipelines make up roughly two-tenths of 1%. So to tout the safety of two-tenths of 1% of all of our pipelines in the country is probably statistically not the best argument to make, I would say, because as you continue to have more miles of pipelines, statistically, you would have more issues, and two-tenths of 1% is a very, very small amount. Secondly, you're talking about the voids up by Bismarck that you're gonna be putting this in the ground. Why not voids in Iowa?
There's a specific geological structure that needs to be there, called a capstone. Iowa does not possess this. There may be certain parts in very small locations that do. In order for us to sequester this carbon and for it to stay locked underground, there has to be a specific geological structure, it miles underneath the ground. It creates a cavern, it's a porous rock, and the CO2 basically absorbs into it like a sponge. I believe it almost turns into like a chalky material over time. I think that process actually happens pretty, pretty recently, or pretty relatively quick. If you look at any place where sequestration is currently happening, it is because they have that geological structure. So North Dakota is probably one of our closest ones, especially in regards to the ethanol plant partners that we have moving up towards North Dakota. And I think Illinois may have some places as well, but it does not exist in Iowa, to my knowledge, not in abundance.
And then in regards to saving the ethanol industry, so you believe it's the policy of the Iowa and federal government that we're gonna shutter billions of dollars of infrastructure and lay off thousands of jobs and, and cause billions of dollars of economic damage to farmers if we don't do this pipeline?
I think the ethanol industry will shutter, or else if they can't use projects to lower their CI score, and that starts affecting the way they do business, and they're not, they, economically, they can't make it, they're in the red, it'll, for one, affect the price of corn, or they may have to move elsewhere where these projects can take place. So this gives them a lot of opportunities outside of just paying better prices for corn, so.
Well, I've never seen a politician try to kill jobs, so I guess if they're gonna do it, it won't be on an election year, I can guarantee you that. But, so, how the pipeline will save the ethanol is by taking carbon out of the atmosphere, is that correct?
Correct, we'll capture it at the facility.
So what kind of a reduction will we see in the atmosphere of carbon?
Yeah, well, what is it? I think, I think it equates to about 12 million cars a year as far as the CO2 released. I don't know what that is exactly.
That would be if, if globally, carbon output doesn't increase, correct?
Yeah, and I think, right now, it's just pumping out, out of the stack, as we speak, at the, the CO2 plants.
So like China could make like one coal plant, and then basically, everything that you've done would be offset by that one plant in China?
Yeah, and I think that's something that we're running into as these emerging markets are changing and being voted in. You know, we're running into, yeah, we're, we're trying to progress or stay viable in a market that's progressing towards lower carbon intensity fuel. It also gives us ethanol, you know, there's a lot of emerging green energy, and we're running into this a lot. Electric cars are becoming more prevalent. The, you know, this green energy market, you know, we've discussed windmills for, for quite a bit of time. This gives ethanol a seat at the table as a green energy. They are very carbon-intensive. So, you know, when we're all sitting around and 10 years at the table, and we've been able to lower carbon intensity score for CO2, and they can, they can almost reach negative with other different things that they, you know, plan on implementing, but it gives them a seat at the table with emerging electric and windmill, solar, so.
My last question. So regarding ethanol plants, again, companies like Google, Microsoft, Facebook, they can have a net-zero carbon because they purchased carbon credits. I'm a farmer myself, so my, my carbon footprint is vastly negative compared to the average person. So if those companies can do that, what's stopping ethanol plants from buying carbon credits from their farmer customers and being net-zero like all of the other companies that are doing that around the globe?
I think it comes down to they're having to purchase those carbon credits. And then, you know, the economy is very, is very complex, but it generally is a trickle-down effect. If they're having to purchase things instead of sell ethanol, then it's affecting the amount of money down the line that they can pay for corn, and the amount of profit that they're making along the line. So it seems to be a very important issue to them. And yeah, we're, I think we're very happy to be able to build a capture facility and see if we can keep ethanol going and growing. And I'm sure, you know, Iowans all over the state understand how important, you know, 53% of the corn going to ethanol is, 50, 53%. And so it, some of the reports are doom and gloom. I just personally think, you know, if we can produce jobs and build infrastructure and keep the economy going, we're, we're all doing a pretty good job.
That's all I have. Riley, I don't have a question, it's more concern. Supervisor Nelson and I met with two of your colleagues, and they tried to reassure us that Summit would not use eminent domain, but I don't know if you guys have recently known that, you know, the Argus Leader just reported in March that Summit has initiated 80 eminent domains against South Dakota landowners to go ahead and pre-impotentate the land through eminent domain. I've got, I'm concerned with, you know, we keep hearing this same talking point, that we're not gonna use eminent domain, we're gonna work, but the company's already displayed their actions in South Dakota and our fellow, you know, neighboring states. And so I'm just, I don't have a question, it's more of a concern that, you know, the word of Summit Carbon is not looking too well in this community because of this, what's happening, so.
And I understand your concern, yeah. No, I totally understand your concern. And I'm not necessarily involved with South Dakota all that much. I think what, in some cases, we've ran into is we have not been able to make contact with some people for a very long time. They've reached a bit of an impasse, and they've started the process, but negotiations will continue. The, you know, if, I'm sure people in the county have gone through the process before for infrastructure projects, and it's very, it's very long, and it's nothing, you know, anybody really wants to do, but, you know, reaching an impasse is, is something we, we hope we, you know, never reach. But the negotiation's gonna continue despite the, you know, the paperwork of the situation, so.
Yeah, I understand that. I just encourage you to maybe pass it on to your, to your superiors or your of the channel, but...
I appreciate it, yeah. I understand your concern.
Yeah, that's all I have.
To answer a question that was brought up earlier, total miles, if they're at 68 or 69%, that would be between 684 and 694 total miles?
Yeah, and I should know that off the top of my head.
Which would leave 212 to 222 miles yet. But that's, to answer those questions, I would like to move on.
Good questions from the board. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank y'all for having us. And yeah, we'll, we'll stop back by here in a few months, give you an update, and we'll hopefully answer any other questions you have. But thank y'all for having us, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, do you have an extra document for the meeting minutes, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, do you have a question for Riley?
I do. Doyle Turner, 2738 200 Street. Riley, you said that it would be a real logistical problem to get the CO2... Riley, you said that it would be a real logistical problem to get the CO2 to the, to oil fracking fields. There's an existing pipeline in North Dakota, not far from your sequestration site, that goes to Canada to the oil fields. Were you aware of that?
No, sir, but yeah.
It's actually owned by the company that produces the electricity that supplies our rural electric cooperatives. So, that part I find very erroneous. Now, on the ethanol won't die part, ethanol, they're saying that ethanol can't survive without this. Under forty-five Q of the Inflation Reduction Act, sequestration is not the only thing offered that is number one subsidized and number two lowers the carbon index for the ethanol plants, correct?
Correct.
There are how many?
Quite a few, I believe.
There are three sectors. It is, it is carbon sequestration, it is alternative uses, and it is enhanced oil production. So, that, to say that without these pipelines ethanol would cease to exist is completely erroneous because there are ample other opportunities to use that don't involve pipelines. Some of them do, some of them don't, correct?
Correct.
As far as the geology in Iowa, I met with the heads of the geology department in Iowa City, and their comment was there are probably all sorts of sites in Iowa that actually qualify for this. The real difference between your site in North Dakota and in Illinois is that there's coal in both of those regions, and the coal industry has to do many, many very deep wells to test the geology. Iowa, on the whole, doesn't have deep wells dug, they literally don't know what's down there. Now, on the areas that were tested in the nineteen-eighties when they were looking for oil down around Carroll and Manning, they have found sites that they can sequester it, and there is actually, according to the Iowa Renewable Fuels Association, there is an ethanol plant that is looking to sequester their own CO2 in Iowa. So, I think there's a lot of things in this that if you're trying to stop misconceptions, you probably should stop doing the misconceptions. Thank you.
Moving on. Item fifteen from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nara. This is approval of a contract for HMA Route and Seal twenty-twenty-three project with Sioux Commercial Sweeping for twenty-five thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
I recommend approval of the contract. I'll move it.
Second.
Most by Raddick, second by Taylor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, passes five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixteen from Human Resources includes A, fraction, approval to increase EMS holidays worked pay to double for twenty-four hours and holiday benefit pay for twelve hours.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. Excuse me, my allergies are winning today. We have been looking at different situations and the staffing issues out at emergency services, and as comparing our benefits to other cities in the area and Sioux City of the same number of population, the holiday time really kinda stuck out to us. Right now, our EMS workers that do work on the holiday get paid for eight hours of holiday time, where we think it would be, you know, fair and also maybe help with recruitment if we pay them for twenty-four hours of that holiday that is worked, because we worked that twenty-four hours, we figured they should be paid that twenty-four hours. So that would be the holiday side. Well, and then we'd like to increase the holiday pay for the employees that aren't working to twelve hours. You know, that's basically just for retention. And then also, on the holiday, there's eight hours that would be worked in a sixteen-hour shift, so we figured that twelve hours in the middle would be fair for people that don't work the holiday. Questions?
Questions?
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay. One question, so we are offering twenty-four hour coverage, correct?
Correct.
Has that, how long has that been? How long have we, how long have we been doing that? Is that new, has that been going on for years, or just?
Years.
Okay.
Quite a long, very long time, probably, well, Sheldon, or Don will be there twenty-eight years, so at least last, you know, since conception emergency services, they've been doing a twenty-four shift. Used to be managed a little bit differently, but it's been twenty-eight, forty-eight, twenty-eight on, forty-eight off for quite a few years.
Is there, secondly, is there a possibility to, instead of having to pay twenty-four hours, is there a possibility to have like hours where we don't cover, like at midnight to four AM, or just to help?
Would be a nice thing, but if you break it down and you look at, we use ActiveDunder one, so I can get on my computer and I can look at it. It changes, you know, it's sporadic from, you know, it used to be Thursday was the busiest day, and that was from like nine to six. Now, the early morning side from three to eight is picked up. So it's hard to, you know, it's hard to predict. I wish there was a good way, but there just, there really isn't.
Go ahead, I'll just go ahead.
So, just, I'm sorry, to wrap my mind around it. We have, on, let's say that there's a July Fourth holiday, and we're not gonna take a day off because emergencies don't take a day off, right? And so in a twenty-four hour period, in the past, we've been paying, you get eight hours of holiday pay in that twenty-four hour period. And you're saying that in other counties and other cities, they're getting a full twenty-four hours because July Fourth is July Fourth, and we just don't have you tap out at getting paid. I mean, I'm digesting, sorry, I'm a slow learner.
So, for example, we would have, two people work twenty-four hours. Actually, it'd end up being like four different people within that twenty-four hours, an eight-hour shift and a sixteen-hour shift. So everybody that works on that holiday will get the double time, every hour worked.
But every hour actually worked, is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, actually worked.
Okay.
Correct.
Why did we do that in the past? Do we have any reason or rationale that it was?
I think, I think it was done for a better way to manage it, you know, to manage the holiday pay. But when, when we started looking at it, you know, it's really unfair for a person that's working a twenty-four-hour shift, you know, is there from eight in the morning on July Fourth to eight o'clock the next morning, and only getting eight hours of holiday pay. It really wasn't fair, you know, and I'm not saying you'd have people that would step up and maybe work that holiday, but, you know, we all get to spend it with our family, and they don't. You know, I mean, they, they're away from Memorial Day, Christmas, you know, New Year's. You know, they, them holidays, we can't work around, you know, so, so they work the whole holiday. And in the past, they, from the midnight to eight in the morning, they didn't get any holiday pay whatsoever. This changes that to and allows them to get double time for them, eight hours from midnight to eight.
Okay, so you've got, at least just me, you got me there. What's the, what are we increasing it from, and what are we increasing it to in terms of the holiday benefit pay?
It would have been eight hours, two and a half times. That was the past, what we'd like to change now would be the twenty-four hours for the double pay. So I do believe it is, and maybe Michelle can help us out, because she helped us with the numbers. How much more per shift, have you brought that up by chance?
I can pull the spreadsheet up, I don't know off the top of my head, but currently, there was a EMS policy procedure that Gary had drawn up, and I don't know if it was approved by the board, but the procedures that we have been following since I've been here was to pay between the hours of eight AM and four PM is the holiday hours. So during those hours, if an individual worked, then they would get straight time, and then they would get time and a half in comp time or overtime if they chose comp. The preference in that book was to choose comp time, but there's a maximum of eighty hours comp time allowed. With hours that they work, they reach that very quickly, so it's a very low number for the amount of time that they have. And that comp has to be paid out, so ultimately, if you get paid overtime or comp, you're gonna get paid it out eventually anyway. And the new proposal that we worked on the numbers was for twenty-four hours at double time.
So you go from two and a half down to two, but it's twenty-four instead of eight?
Yes.
And the total of that per fiscal year is eleven thousand five eighty?
No.
No.
For this specific, this one scenario of the holiday pay for individuals that work was five thousand five hundred and six dollars, I believe. The remainder is for the individuals who are off on a holiday and receive holiday pay. So that's the second item that I think that is still to come to discuss.
So I, I personally don't care so much about a single holiday. I just wanna know, big picture, as supervisors, what are we annually adding per fiscal year? And that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, what, what's the net impact for FY twenty-four? Where's the money coming from? I get conceptually, you got me, I understand, I understand it. But I just wanna know, what's the long-term?
So, approximately eleven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars is the increase. We did not add, I don't think the taxes or the fivers, so it's just approximate around.
But I was just asking, is that per fiscal year? And I thought Michelle was saying, no, that that's not, that's just for something.
There's two different items. One of them is holiday pay for an individual who works, that involves two people on every holiday. Now, you have how many other people aside from those two people?
Well, you've got, if you're fully staffed, you'd have six, and then you'd have the part-times.
So there's equivalent of a certain number of individuals who would get holiday pay for not working in this scenario, and that's, you have those numbers, Melissa?
Why would they get holiday pay for not working?
Holiday pay, we provide holiday pay to our employees.
Okay.
Yeah, benefit.
But not, not at the two times, or eight?
No.
No, that'd be the single rate, single, single, right.
Again, slow learner.
Yeah, just regular time.
And if I can also clarify, when we produce the payroll budget for EMS, what the numbers that are produced is for two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six hours per year at straight pay. Holiday pay is budgeted by Scott, the sheriff, whoever has holiday pay, they come up with those numbers, so they calculate those numbers for anything that's worked more than two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six. I'm happy to help work those figures, you know, based on what they tell me, but ultimately, what we budget on the regular line is two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six hours. That is not going to change. What will change here is the holiday pay or the holiday overtime pay that you'll see on that budget. So that's what would increase.
But we're, right now, we don't know for FY twenty-three, with this many holidays, times this, and this formula, this is your number in FY twenty-four, this is your number, we don't know that right now.
Well, twenty-four, we're pretty sure on, well, be the-
Well, for Memorial Day, we figured seventeen hundred dollars would be the increase for this Memorial Day.
But in terms of all the holidays, and I can't do that math quickly enough.
Eleven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
That's for an entire fiscal year.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And that money is coming from reserves, essentially?
For next year?
Right.
I'd like to do amendment, but yes, reserves on general basic and rule basic, because we split the cost for paramedics.
Have you been down-staffed, though, still?
Still short of paramedic, yes.
So technically?
Yes, we're still short, but we've still been working at covering that shift with the part-time guys or some of our other full-time paramedics splitting the shift or double shifting it. So that's, yeah, we're still getting the coverage.
What I'm saying is, you know, you'd basically have some savings there by not having another full-time employee, because you'd have a benefit side of it, that you could probably cover that eleven thousand at least fiscally, so you wouldn't have to use reserves for year one, is what I'm saying.
Could have, yes.
So that would depend on the overtime?
Yes, and if that position would get filled.
Last question, I promise. So are there any, is this, and I, I'm supportive of this, so please hear that. My only question is, are we going to have someone come next week and say, what you did for emergency, and this is maybe a Melissa question, what you did in emergency services, that was great. We want the same thing, and this is what you now need to do, or is this a unique situation? And just a question, I just wanna know.
No, I think this actually makes emergency services more equal to the other departments, because, for example, we're in the sheriff's office, if they work a twelve-hour shift, they get twelve hours of holiday pay. The courthouse, if we work eight-hours shifts, we get eight hours of holiday pay. So actually, it makes them more equal to the other departments.
Thank you.
That's kind of the question I was gonna have, so with that answered, I'll move it.
Second.
Most by Raddick, second by Nelson. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, passes five-zero. Item B is approval of purchase of the cyber liability insurance policy for FY twenty-four.
I think we are going to defer this till next week, and Josh, if you could help me out there?
Yes, I had a meeting with John Malloy within the last couple days related to an agreement for the hosting of county data on an outside server. I think that that was approved as part of the budget process. As part of that discussion, we referenced needing to review this policy in light of that. So that's why we're requesting to defer it, just to see if it changes anything and make sure that the outside hosting is covered under this policy.
Okay. No action will be taken. Item C is approval of the updated security awareness resolution, the new security awareness policy for Woodbury County employees using the WCICC IT network, and the updated acceptable use technology policy for all Woodbury County employees, I believe previously passed and examined by the city, city side. So we're just, as a joint, you know, department, we are replicating those on the county side and updating those, so I don't think there's anything major to note.
We're just, we're updating the resolution plus the two policies.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Bettinger, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, passes five-zero, thank you. Item seventeen from Board Administration, Finance Director Dennis Butler. First item A is for information, this is discussion on House File, or now Law, seven eighteen, relating to the Iowa Property Tax Reform Bill. I asked the board, I believe, and I asked Dennis for just a summation and a basic overview of how the legislation impacts our processes going forward, so, go ahead.
Okay, I was kinda asked, you know, what effect will this have on a taxpayer in twenty-four, twenty-five? To come to that, we're actually gonna have to wait till probably December when we get our tax base. The reason I'm saying that, because we do have a, you know, assessment right now as of January first. Problem is, we have eighteen hundred appeals that could change that bottom line there. The other thing is, in the summer of, which would be August, the Department of Revenue reviews what the assessors send down, they're comparing statewide, and they could come back with three changes, leave the valuation the same, decrease them, or increase them. Sometimes this could amount to tens of millions of dollars. The next item there is utility values do not come out till, I believe, in October. That amounts to about five hundred million of our tax base. With that said, the evaluation for utilities is done in a whole different formula that the state has with their profits, things like that, their construction, everything like that. So that very variable could be anywhere from fifty to a hundred million. And then the last thing is, we will not know the rollbacks for property till the month of October. This year, that is gonna be a huge change to the taxpayer, because we may be going from fifty-four, fifty-six percent rollback on residential down to forty-six to forty-seven percent. We won't know that number until it comes out in October. So with that said, the tax base is important to know what that's gonna be. Why that's important is because in the bill, if you are in between a valuation increase, I think between a hundred and two and a hundred and six percent, you're gonna be allowed to go approximately two percent. Anything above that will be reduced. If you're over a hundred and six percent, which is a bigger tax base, now you gotta knock it down by three percent. So, with that all put together there, what's gonna happen in twenty-four, twenty-five, in all probability is our tax askings will go up two or three percent from what they are today. But, that doesn't mean that taxpayer's gonna have increased taxes because of the rollbacks, and if our tax base is, say, a hundred and ten percent, we use that base to figure out what the tax rate will be, and that's where the legislature's coming- and that's where the legislator's coming back, say, yes, we possibly save a hundred million statewide. We're gonna be asking for more tax dollars collected, but when you divide that into a bigger number, the tax rate should drop. And that's what their thoughts are with our three eighty-eight tax, you know, tax rate, we're above the three fifty. Gradually, over the years, it'll drop two or three percent probably each year. Now, we're a little different scenario, because we gotta make up some monies that we're using next year, called cash reserves. So that, we won't know until probably December, when we get close to budget time, what we're gonna be able to go up, and how it's gonna affect the taxpayer. We're lucky, because now the city did come out and say, yes, we're reducing, we're gonna be reduced two point one million. That reduction is coming about because they're eliminating levies such as the emergency fund, civic center, band, symphony, and there's one other one for the two, two point one million. When they say eliminate, now they cannot levy individually for these activities, has to go in their general fund. We don't have that scenario. Our scenario is, we have general basic, and we have rural basic that falls under all this cap they're talking about. General sub is still unlimited. They were gonna move court services over to general basic, but they stopped. They did not do that. Debt service is unlimited, obviously, because you got principal and interest, so projects can be shifted. You know, where we may have to borrow money for them, that's a possibility. But we have to be careful there, because the bill also eliminated what they call the, they called the catch-all. Which, say, this year, example is, we bought out of our CIP, under our essential purpose, things like that, we bought sheriff's cars. We bought partial tasers, sheriff's radios, mercy vehicle, those are things that we won't be able to borrow for in future years. We're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna fund these. The next item they are changing, that's gonna be an unfunded mandate, when we get to homestead tax credit. This is something the word needs to get out to people who are sixty-five and older, our senior citizens, I'm one of them, believe it or not, that you will get your forty-eight, fifty tax credit. What I mean by that, everybody files a homestead, has four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars worth of value, times their tax rate. That product there comes off your consolidated tax. They left that intact. They're gonna fund that for the next, till fiscal year twenty-nine. This is a four-year law, they wrote. The big change is, people over sixty-five will get the tax credit, but they'll also start getting in twenty-four, twenty-five an additional three thousand dollar tax valuation exemption. What that means, they get the forty-eight, fifty tax credit, but they're getting also three thousand knocked off their total taxable value. Then in twenty-five, twenty-six, that number jumps to six thousand for everybody sixty-five and older. So they get the six thousand plus the forty-eight, fifty. Now, to get this credit, they have to file by July first of this year for twenty-three to be effective for twenty-four, twenty-five. So there's a pretty big effort, and I talked to the city assessor, that there was something in the paper today that you need to get in, file your additional credit for, people are over sixty-five or over, to get this credit for next year. They have a month and a half approximately to get this all done, and they do not have any idea how many of their eighteen thousand homestead tax credits are gonna be eligible for this additional, because they've never put age on the application. Now they have to prove that they are sixty-five or older.
Are there income guidelines with this, or it's just you're sixty-five?
Nope.
Can you make?
You have to own the property and live there, just like a homestead.
Right, but let's say that somebody is independently wealthy and they, they have a four million dollar home, are they eligible the same as?
Yes, there's no income limits on it.
That makes really good sense.
Sixty-five or older, it's a good benefit for people who are on fixed incomes. Most people, yeah, it's something. The other thing that did change in the law was-
Even if your fixed income is millions of dollars.
Is what?
Even if your fixed income is millions of dollars.
Yep.
Okay.
The other thing that did change was essential purpose. They originally were having that reduced by thirty percent. From a million two, down to about eight hundred and some thousand dollars. Well, they claimed that's a clerical error when they put out the bill. Well, it took them a month to find that, and then now they've shifted where it's thirty percent increase. So for essential purpose such as buildings, demolitions, public buildings, for like, we need to put a building up, they raised that from a million two to a million five sixty. So it gives more latitude there, a lot of it going back to the voters to ask for, you know, do something. This may affect the decisions down the road, that may have to be made on certain buildings that we own or demolish. So all in all, it's yet to be seen if it'll save a hundred million. We are gonna be asking for more, every entity, city, county will be asking for more money, because two or three percent growth in our tax asking won't cover everything, especially when we got contracts, we've already settled for a lot more than that. And we don't know what the future is, because all of our contracts are due this fall. So with that said, that's where we're at. It's kind of up in the air, yes, it's gonna probably reduce taxes, our rate will eventually fall. If the rate falls, we only generate X number of dollars. So that's my update. Any changes, we will pass them on. I did talk to State Comptroller's Office, or Department of Management now. They agree, there's no way anybody can come up with a number that it will affect twenty-four, twenty-five. I've talked to my counterpart at City Hall, they agree also. So it's kind of a wait and see, and see how much damage was really done, but this bill is good for four years. Then they'll review and see if it really did what they intended to do. But I can predict, if it does, it does what it intended to do in the first year or two, they'll be back changing it again. The problem is, we are not gonna be able to backfill, they will not backfill this tax valuation credit. It's gonna reduce it that, that's gonna be all the taxing bodies have to eat it. And we have no idea how many people that is, and our population is gradually aging. So we'll see where that goes, but we'll have an idea a little bit after July first, how many applications to get back. But the key is getting the word out to these people that they need to come in and file before July first, or they won't be eligible. You're welcome. Okay.
Any questions for Dennis? Not that you're a state legislator, but, or know what goes on in their heads? Okay, thanks for the update. If you have anything else, please let us know.
Yes.
And your second item for action, Dennis, is approval of a letter of support for Kosovich and Murphy Development's application for the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credits.
Yes, this is a request made by Kosovich and Murphy Development. They are trying to get what we call Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credits. The city, Sioux City, has sent a letter of support, Chamber of Commerce has sent a letter of support. Anything we can do to help increase the tax base and improve the, you know, housing, because we need more housing, and it's evident, we have to have housing. And this is one way to get a possibly, you know, help of going. And I do, did invite Mr. Kosovich here to make a comment on the project, if you'd like to hear from him, he is coming forward. I told him, Megan, you know, just a few minutes, and that's it.
Paul Kosovich, Sioux City here. I asked Dennis to write this letter for us. Apparently, I had to go in front of you guys, but we need to submit five letters of support for the project. It's almost a ten million dollar project. It's going off, just off Hamilton, the old Crescent Elementary School. We're gonna tear it down. We're doing asbestos abatement right now, and then demolition will be in the next couple of months. Hopefully, start this fall, but it's a big project, and we need this tax credit to make it work, especially with building materials where they're at right now, and the investment into the project.
Thank you for investing in the community, developing here, and helping to make Sioux City a better place, and Woodbury County as well. And with that, I'm gonna move it here for you.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you.
One other thing, they're actually paving Elk Creek Road this week, too, that you guys helped us on, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Good luck. All right, item eighteen from the Board of Supervisors, myself. It includes three action items, which are a package deal. But I'll, I'll go over them as far as what they are first. The first one, A, and B are approvals of joint representation letters of Woodbury County in the Iowa Utilities Board Pipeline Permit Proceedings for Summit separately and Navigator Hartland Greenway separately. And the final one is approval of an engagement letter with Allers and Cooney for representation in the matter of hazardous liquid pipeline permits and regulations, the same law firm being reflected in the first two items. A week or two ago, the board asked me to reach out to the law firm that was representing other counties in regards to intervening with the IUB process. It was brought to our attention that there is a July deadline. And in order to do that, I contacted the attorney with Allers and Cooney, explained our position as far as what the board is, is hearing from our constituents, and our desire to certainly do something to represent their interests, and three major things, I think, we want to do, is we want to protect our future economic development, our land values, and public safety. And there are some counties that are approaching this individually, and I think the board is of the mindset, given our past comments, that our efforts are better expended as part of a, you know, combined effort. One effort, one brief, so to speak. And so what these items do is, I had requested this firm to represent Woodbury County. That's what I'm asking the board to do tonight, and that is that we would join with Dickinson, Shelby, Floyd, Cassuth, Wright, and Emmett Counties, and also Harden County, that's being represented by their own county attorney, in, in intervening and applying, and, and providing those briefs, sharing the costs of representation, sharing the costs of expert witness, which I think makes good financial sense. And as we share the costs, it's important to point out that it's not by population, as a lot of agreements are, with Woodbury County being the most populous one in this group of eight, but that it is by county. So we, or, sorry, there's seven that are actually sharing the costs, so we would be one-seventh of an estimated one hundred thousand dollar per pipeline case. Of course, you can't, you know, predict how long these court cases last, but just to give a, a gauge of that number divided by seven is where we currently are. The briefs will be worked on soon, and in advance of that deadline. What this board needs to do is to prepare for all scenarios, and that includes improved placement. The major focus of this, I believe, is related to the efforts on the state rules. Because that is what is the determining factor in a lot of the pending questions. We've received a wealth of information, ideas, and perspectives from our constituents, and from interested parties. And now is the time for the county board to, you know, buckle up and act, and start to create its own arguments in coordination with an interesting dynamic here, which is the, you know, attorney-client privilege shared between counties of the same mindset, that all have the same goals, and, and, you know, that's why we have a waiver in here, and that's why we have joint representation with them. And so if the board approves this, then what the public can anticipate, I believe, is we will start to make, we will start to strategize with legal counsel, and those strategies will take place in closed session. We hope the reasoning is, is understood for that, that there is a need for the counties to present a case, and present a similar case, and present a complimentary case that impacts the, you know, state rules that govern the, the entire process. And so that's why we will probably be a little bit, you know, you've, you've heard it quite a bit today, and as we have these updates from the companies, we have that opportunity. But going forward, I would personally anticipate there to be less, so to speak, legal courtroom battles in the boardroom here, because we're reserving, we now have counsel. So, and this is, you know, something that was recommended, I want to make it clear, was, you know, this, if the board wanted this level of, of representation, it was recommended by the county attorney's office. And this is the, this is the expert in this area, serving the state of Iowa. So with that long introduction, does the board have any questions or concerns about what this entails?
No, I would move it.
Second.
So for item A, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, this is the joint representation letter regarding the Navigator Hartland Greenway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. I'll move item B, which is the same for Summit Carbon Solutions.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Item C, I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, this is for the engagement letter with Allers and Cooney. Hearing no final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you again for everyone who has voiced their concerns, and it is, and the county certainly wants to do what it, what it can. And that is what we're doing here, is what we can. Item nineteen from Board of Supervisors, Mr. Taylor and Nelson. This is for information regarding future direction and recommendations for Climbing Hills Emergency Services Building.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is a culmination of meeting Supervisors Nelson and myself, with Emergency Services Director Scott Mitchell, and Building Services Director Kenny Schmidt. I'll give a brief introduction, and then we can kind of tag team on this, but I think it's true that we don't believe that there's good justification for tuck pointing, because it's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar endeavor that could be in every ten to fifteen years' time. And so we would exceed in five decades the, the one point, two million dollar price tag of a bond issue, and that doesn't seem to make sense. The old nineteen sixteen schoolhouse does have the two thousand and four boilers. They run lead and lag, and so they're probably forty years, also serves as a bomb shelter backup communications. And then in terms of actually getting to a, a bond issue itself, we talked about the feasibility of that. So short of that, it seems like there's a lot of good recommendations that we can make, and so I'll hand it over to Supervisor Nelson and Emergency Services Directors Mitchell.
Yeah, I, I had the opportunity to go down to Emergency Services, when was that, back in March? And hung out with you and, and staff for several hours, and got really into the tour of the building, and then we went out again last week, and we were there for several hours again, and a lot of what they do down there is, is a lot of storage for emergency equipment. I mean, it's, and it's stuff that can't necessarily be in ninety-degree weather, but it's stuff that doesn't, that can't necessarily be in thirty or twenty-degree weather. So a large part of the old school is, is not really, air-conditioned, not really heated, but it just works perfect for storing the equipment that they have. But they have massive amounts of, whether it's equipment, trailers, vehicles, boats, that kind of stuff that we have to store, and that makes it a really precarious and tough issue for a bond debate, because you're essentially asking her to bond for a storage. There is some stuff that I think that we discussed that we should do for the staff out there, that they work twenty-four hour shifts, so they're staying there when they're not out on calls. And we think that kind of their living quarters, that we could spend some money there to try to make the amenities better, which we think would help with retention, and potentially invites more people to fill the open position that we've, that you've been working on getting filled for some time. But I think that, in all seriousness, the, the, the building, of a new building is only one part of the problem. The other part is taking down the old building, and that old school, the foundation, the thickness of the walls are just unbelievable. And I mean, it's, it's gonna take a massive amount of money to take the old building down, let alone build a new one. So I think what we discussed, and this was kind of at the encouragement of Kenny Schmidt, was to begin to set money aside, and, and to save for a project. And then in a few years, we'll have, we'll have to save pretty hard, you know, to, to do something down the road, so. But the few things that we talked about, obviously, not doing the tuck pointing, but fixing the chimney, the boilers are okay. I think they can last for the duration that we can plan for something different. And we, we got some contractors that come out, look at some BAT mitigation and some different things, but I guess that was kind of the gist of it, Jeremy.
Yeah, and, and the only other thing is I would piggyback on is, we're gonna have them look at the roof.
Yep.
Structurally, it sounds like that, that structure-
look at the roof, which structurally, it sounds like that, that structure is built solidly.
It is, it's a pretty solid building.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking about the demo would be a bond issue in and of itself.
Yeah.
So to be able to look at the roof and say, all right, if we're going to stay, what's the short-term, five, 10, 15 years that we need to do? The furniture fixture and equipment to improve the suitability conditions, bat proofing, and taking off the top four foot of stack and lining that, and then looking at electronic engineering regarding the camera system, and, you know, some of the spot things that get us the next 10 years is what we're looking at. And we can do that within a reasonable amount of money. So that's kind of our aerial overview, Scott, if you have.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I don't think building a new building at that facility, you know, that building's 100 and some years old. I think that building has a lot of life left in it. I think that if the county would be willing to put some more money into it, we can get another, you know, five, eight, maybe 10 years out of it, maybe 15. You know, I can't guarantee that, but, you know, I think, I don't think building a new building this time is the right thing to do with taxpayers' money. So I think we need to look at other options to make it more usable and, and proof it for the bats and some of that stuff. And I think we've got a good plan for that, if that, you know, we'll see what that looks like in numbers first, but I think it, it might be a good option to keep the building in, keep it running.
The only other one I forgot, sorry, is to go through the steam traps for efficiency's sake, something that we talked about.
Yeah, there'd be, there, I don't remember how many we replaced last year, but replace the rest of them, you know, because that's just, and then there'd be a few pieces of pipe, and then whatever we could do that would be, you know, improved, maybe take, taking care of the patients out in Woodbury County, you know, we're looking at.
So in terms of next steps, what you should expect from the four of us, kind of in this committee work sort of model, is to come back in two, three, four weeks when we have these different estimates. And one of the things we talked about is the public doesn't have much appetite for, okay, every week there seems to be yet another thing, for four or five weeks, let's come back with a comprehensive plan. This is what everything on this list is going to entail. Here's the price tag. Here's the importance of why it's so necessary out in rural areas to provide emergency services and go from there.
Yeah. Because I don't think we can build a building that's going to last like that building. I mean, you two seem the, you know, in the, in the, down the boiler, saw thick the walls were. We can't, we can't build a building today to last what that building will.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. If, if the outside wasn't brick, that would require tuck pointing, the rest of the, I mean, it's square, I mean, it is a very solid building.
Yeah, a reason why the bomb shelters are.
Yeah, I mean, it's a solid old building. Did you go to school there?
Oh, yeah.
I gotta say, I bet he went to school there. Noah went to school there.
I would like to say, I've been in there twice, and I know it's not the newest building. You have, you don't have the nicest amenities, but I appreciate that both times I've been there, even though there's staff that are literally living there, how clean it's been.
Thank you. You can do that, that goes to the staff.
I want you to pass that along.
I will, I will pass it on to all three shifts and everybody, because they do work very hard at taking care of, you know, they live there.
Yeah.
For 24 hours. And they do a very good job of taking care of it.
I really appreciate that.
So I guess, you know, a concern of mine, of course, that building is quite a bit more square footage than what's needed. So the excess square footage is just more for us to maintain, whereas, you know, maybe something that's appropriate square footage for an emergency services-type facility, you know, a new building, maybe on the same lot, turn the old garage, machine shed area into storage. We probably could get rid of some of the equipment that is excess, not necessarily needed or maintained, because it is too much equipment for what the staff could even do.
But looking at that, Keith, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Raddick, his idea, an idea, you know, a lot of what they have, you know, like the 150 cops. Now, knock on wood, hopefully we never need them. But if we do need them to displace, say a tornado comes through, sarsa bluff or snow or something, we have to put them up in place. We have enough with what emergency services has and what the Salvation Army has, we could probably find a place for them, because it's not going to be in one shelter. So I agree, maybe some, and there is a few things we could get rid of, but over the bulk of the things that take a lot of, you just can't.
Sure.
I mean, and that's, that's one of the things is, you know, you downsize it, the size of the county is, and we're spread out, we're really kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. And I don't want to see us do that.
And I would say, if you got rid of it, if you wanted to buy it back, we would pay so much more money than what we have in it current.
Yeah, I mean, Gary, Gary, Gary collected a nice collection of stuff through his years and how he was able to fund it, he did a very good job. I mean, and I don't care what anybody says, he has. And it, it shows because the equipment's there.
That was, I think, the most eye-opening thing. I was looking at 50 different backboard, you know, stretcher things, my gosh, hopefully we don't have a situation where you have 50 people who, you know, have to be straight, on a straight board. But, you know, I'm reading in my seventh grade reading class about Grand Island, 1979 or so, when 513 homes were wiped out, and, you know, the night of the twisters, and just that sort of scenario, you know, you kind of have to, it seems excessive until it doesn't. And so that's kind of the balancing, so I think it's a point well taken, it's just kind of, you know.
And Keith, you want to come out and kind of see it maybe more in-depth, like?
I've been through a lot of that myself already.
Mark has, you know, more than any of you guys are more willing. I mean, it's.
And part of the recommendations on the new building come from me being through it in the past. So, I mean, we're, we're going to look at this after we have more in-depth information. Personally, I've been running some numbers on my own, and like, you start looking at, okay, you bond for this, you bond for that, and eventually it becomes more money, like our L E C.
Yep.
To maintain than it is to just build a new. And if we have some kind of funds that come back from ARPA that we don't use in the L E C, and our bonding capacity has gone up 30%, so it's 1.56 million, maybe we do have the money to build the new place. So, I mean, it's our job to plan and do due diligence, and I think the board's doing the right thing. But I don't want anyone to say, no, we're off the hook, you know, we don't need it.
No, it's going to have to happen in the future.
And, and can we stick money aside in a sinking fund? You know, what, what, what's the procedure for that, Dennis? I guess if we're going to stick a sinking fund out there.
We just have to figure out where the money's coming from to put in a sinking fund. That's a dedicated fund, just like our maintenance fund for the L E C.
And I think that, this is kind of new learning for me, although we've been on the board for almost 10 years. You know, there's two ways you can go about it. You can bond for it, and then you're paying interest on it. And according to Kenny, you know, to do a bomb shelter and a backup communication center, which is out there right now, we're looking at nearly $3 million, and that's not even demolition costs. So the question becomes, can we start to lay aside money? I mean, that's what a family would do, right? In a budget, like, hey, we're going to put this aside for the next five years then, and after, maybe even 10 years, we're going to build this addition. We're not just going to borrow for it, that's a luxury that we have, you know? So how can we do that in such a way? And I don't know legally, but I think those are great long-term planning things we can start to think about.
Well, and then, of course, one thing you can never factor in is what is the actual inflation going to be? You know, because we tried to factor, what was it, 15% inflation when we were getting jail estimates, and it wasn't even close. And everyone said we were overestimating at 15. So, you know, you can plan as much as you want to, but we can still be wrong.
Yeah.
You know? But I just want the public to know as a board, where you're trying to do the best due diligence to make sure this is the best interest. And, you know, with some of those old Geiger counters and the size of building, maybe we just open up, you know, emergency services museum, charge 20 bucks at the door, there we go, paid for.
Well, look at the time.
It's the phenomenon of the last agenda item.
Right, right. We devolve.
I, I'm appreciative of the efforts, and I think, you know, some more detail would be helpful, but the direction's very good, you know? Appreciate that very much. We, we don't want to throw good money after bad in either direction. So I, I would like to see if it's even possible to do the sinking fund. And I'm supportive of, you know, going ahead with 10 to 15-year, you know, increments. But the analogy of, I was laughing, because the analogy of the family setting aside money with the new law, I mean, your family trying to set aside, set aside money into a sinking fund to, for the future, but then another fam, more powerful family says, no, you cannot save money. You cannot put it in the sinking fund.
You can't make more than this.
Yeah. So we'll see if it pleases the state. We would like to have some long-term plans for our emergency services, emergency communications backup and bomb shelter, if they'll let us.
I can assure you that my family is not setting aside money for a bomb shelter. So I just wanted to clear the air on that.
No, it's a good, it's a good analogy. It's just with the new law, is, is this family even legally allowed to save money? That's what I'm asking here.
Go big brother and do all sorts of analogies.
Yeah. On the tuck pointing, though, is that ever going to be a recommendation?
I don't think so, because one of the things that I ask is, is do you have this done? And then it's, hey, this is good for 30, 40, 50 years? And they actually go through every single mortar joint and go through it, and then they recommend, oh, you need to do that eight to 10 years from now, too. And I asked maybe the dumb question, this is a literature teacher's question, could you side the thing? Could you protect it? Could you wrap it so that you don't have that brick exposure? And the answer was, go back to the books, you know, know what you're talking about. So I think the, the thing is, it's a continual process, and the only time tuck pointing, to me, really seems appropriate, is when you have a building that was constructed between 1917 and 1919 and is valued at $120 million, and that would be this building.
William H. Steele's involved.
Right. So otherwise, it's like it's never-ending.
And that's, there might be, in our ideas, some way that we don't have to do that, because that's the biggest thing with the bats, because of the tuck pointing. But if we can, maybe this other couple ideas might work to help that, to get that wall for an eight, you know, five to eight, maybe 10 years. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone. Item 20, reports on committee meetings.
So I go through Climbing Hill all the time, but there's so many ways through Climbing Hill, I usually take the other way. Is Kevin Lloyd's house still for sale?
No, that, I don't know. There's, that's been sold, so there is a, I can't tell you for sure he owns it, but I know that has been purchased, yes.
Okay. I was trying to add to the problem, because the way that property sits, Kevin, I believe that house used to be the principal's house.
Yes, it used to be the, yes.
So it used to be part of the property, and if we had that property, then you could add on to that new building.
Yes, you could go to the, to the east and the north.
That would be probably your cheapest option, because the cost of, of that house isn't that great compared to tuck pointing and all the other things. So at least you could maybe, rather than sticking money aside, you could add on to that facility, build them a little better place to live, the second comm center, things like that, and slowly get, get something for your money and not let the inflation just wipe your money out. So. That's my idea.
Item 20, any reports on committee meetings?
I did have two, Semco, which I never had a shout-out for Semco before in our 2045 plan, so thank you, Larry, even though you're not here to hear it. Public participation plan has been brought up, and of course, we're trying to get public participation to participate in the public participation plan. Always a challenge. Certs, we're buying furniture, not from me, for public awareness. But yeah, that was about a $61,000 bill as far as getting that outfitted. We're going to add to some of our existing desks in the office, include some of the moving and setup as well. So that new Certs building is moving right along. If you're willing to drive on one-lane Highway 20 over there, you can drive by and sneak a peek. We've discussed a lot of the upcoming access to the new building because of the project. And thankfully, the D O T is leasing that ground to Semco and Certs. So they're going to help provide that access, and it'll eventually be on the north end during construction. I forget the name of the street, but you probably know it, Mark, was it 156th or something north of the D O T?
158th.
158th, that was good. And, yeah, so you take Benton and then 158th to get over there. So that's what I had for you guys.
Anything from you guys?
I had, so we had that meeting out at Emergency Services on, was that Wednesday last week? And then after that, we had the 911 Service Board. That was the first one that I've been able to attend, a supervisor, and a lot of familiar faces in the room, so it was, it was a good meeting that way. The fire chief from Pearson announced to the room that because he knew my brother, John, that I was a good guy. So shout-out to John, I finally made it.
And they were very appreciative that there was a supervisor from outside of Sioux City proper, so.
They did say that, so yes, that was very, that was very nice. Well, then Thursday, I had a conservation board meeting down at Bigelow Park. We did a tour of the new concession stand and the beach and the pier and everything, all the work they'd done down there. It turned out great. They're still doing some finishing, some sod and that grassy, that kind of stuff. But excited to take the, the boys down there this summer and would encourage others to go down there. I know that last summer, there was talks about the water levels and that kind of stuff, but the water levels are up, got people were out there fishing. So please, go camp, go fish, spend your money. So that is all I have.
Item 21, any citizen concerns on anything not addressed on the agenda? Name and address, please.
Lauren Peterson, I live at 1836 Taylor Avenue, and I have a problem with the gravel, you want to call it gravel, putting on our roads. It's putting all sand and dirt. We get a few rocks in there, and frankly, I was getting kind of sickening, I don't know why we can't get some decent gravel out there. So what's the problem with not getting gravel?
What's the location? Do you have a location, specific location, or have you?
Location?
Yeah.
1836 Taylor Avenue, it's gravel road.
Okay.
It's just outside of Creightonville, just east. I've been talking to Martin Nelson about it a little bit. So he's from there with my complaints. It just seems, I know I talked to a county engineer, too, and he says it's up to specs, but I guess I don't agree.
Okay.
I appreciate if we get some rock one of these times. We have gotten some, but it just isn't enough, it doesn't seem like. So I guess that's all I have.
It's not going to be perfectly uniform, but we do our best to uphold standards. Did you have something?
I don't know where these specs come from, but that's what he was talking about.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting us know.
Okay.
I wanted to report on our Hornick project. I've been asked about it when we didn't have anything to report, and we do now. The concrete plant is in place and starting to produce. They finished the intersection at Skinner Drive that becomes our 325th street in town. They were starting to pour some sidewalk today. First half mile coming north out of town, they were running the trimmer on it today. That's the first preparation of the base for a concrete placement. Maybe by the end of this week, we'll be starting to see some going down the road, I'm hoping. But the, the plant is producing, and we're looking at some work finally being done down there. So the contractor's fully mobilized now.
Thank you for that update.
Any other citizen concerns?
Deborah Main, 1026 Charles Avenue. Thank you so much for joining the counties in the Tim Whipple group. You were the first county to object to the pipelines, to file an objection, and the largest county affected, so. And that's the strategy that our landlords have taken, too. We have legal representation of a large group with one lawyer, with one voice, one br-. We have legal representation of a large group with one lawyer, with one voice, one briefing. And I, I really appreciate, appreciate your efforts. Um, May 9th, last week, I was at the Des Moines for the IU Utilities Board meeting and met the two new members of the meeting. There were also over 30 landowners there to speak to the board and address their concerns, which you've heard all of those. And tonight, I listened to Mr. Gibson's presentation and his misconceptions. To me, most of them are fact. They do not have, uh, a hearing scheduled for October, basically because the two members have two years of docket to study and catch up on. So they do not have, uh, even probably a hope of having a hearing in the fall or even the winter. It's probably going to be more into, uh, 2024. So, um, I just want to let you know that, uh, that is definitely not a fact or not a misconception, that they will not have their hearing in October. So we have time to get our ducks in a row and, uh, talk about that. Mr. Rastetter, the owner of Summit Carbon Solution, has been quoted as saying that without this project, and enhanced oil recovery, the project would not be successful. So, uh, and he said that a long time ago. And also, they were talking about the carbon credits. There is a company that will purchase $30 million of carbon credits from Summit Carbon Solution. So not only the sequestration, but the selling of the carbon credits. So it's huge. I, I can't even imagine how much money that is, I just can't wrap my head around it. So thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you very much.
Gail Pom was 1848, 130th Street and Lawton. Uh, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. First of all, I too want to thank you for moving ahead with, uh, hiring Whipple to help us out with this. I don't think we would have time to sort it all out, and your staff is already stressed, so apparently. I sent a email out to you yesterday about, uh, Burley County and Bismarck. Did you all get that? And have time to read it, I hope. Uh, they are in a very similar situation as Sioux City, as far as Summit Carbon Pipelines, wanting to go very close to them, go on some land that they had saved for development. And the two entities, the city and the county, are working together, uh, to have some great setbacks, much larger than anything that I ever read or heard. And I think it's important, we are one of the larger cities, and where do we have to go? For development in, in Woodbury County, for Sioux City. Sargeant Bluff, that area, so. And I have a question, have, do you have a regular communication with the city council about the pipelines? Have you talked to them at all?
I don't.
I'm, I'm, they're so apathetic, I'm not sure they know what they're happening.
Have you gone to the city council meetings?
No, I have not. I'm not, I live in the country, so. Um, I think Deb maybe has talked or tried to talk to them? And she's gotten no, no return calls or anything from them. So I know you guys are already burdened with too many things to do, but I think it might be a good idea if you, uh, have a meeting with the city council and see, you know, what they can do. We would like to have a protest from them as one of the cities in the state that does not agree with the pipelines too. Deb and I are working with Lawton right now, uh, to get them for a protest, but Sioux City's saying they don't want it would be a much bigger feather in our cap to, to get them and say they don't want that. And it's very logical that they wouldn't want it.
This is just far be it from us to tell you what to, but, you know, you have done, I think, great work in educating us. And in no small part, at least all speak for me, have influenced, um, by the information sharing, helping to inform and educate us. I think some of that could be used to help our city councilmen and women as well, because you're kind of preaching to the choir here, and we still want to hear and be involved and informed. But I would say that it will mean just as much, if not more. You, you don't have to be a city of Sioux City resident to be able to educate and inform them as well that this is the impact that it could have upon economic growth and economic development and quality of life in the area.
I, I would be willing to write a letter or call somebody, but I, I would like. I would like to see, uh, maybe you guys suggest a joint luncheon meeting or something with them sometime, just so you can find out what they know and what they don't know. I'm afraid there's a lot they don't know. And it could make a big difference to our county and to the city, so. Um, another thing that I noticed, it's too bad Summit left, but, um, there are a number of, uh, corporations, companies that have already tried the sequestration thing. None of them have been successful. At the most, they've been 40 to 50% successful. Chevron in Australia and Shell in Canada have both been called financial failures because they took the government's money, the taxpayers' money, to start these plants, and they ended up using and making, they ended up making more carbon dioxide in the atmosphere than they were eliminating. So, um, I didn't get a chance to talk to our Summit people tonight, but a lot of what they are spewing is baloney, as far as I'm concerned, so it's all for tonight.
I didn't get that email from you, Gail, so if you want to resend that.
Talk to me afterwards, I must have the wrong email.
I would like to say thank you also. I think you guys are taking a very logical approach to this, and I commend you for what you're doing. There is one thing that I found out, and maybe I was unaware that there is an Office of Consumer Advocates, and they are to represent the people of Iowa to the IUB, which, um, John Crotty is the man that I, the attorney that I talked to there. I think it would be wise if everybody contacted him. I asked him if it was all right for me to give his number out, and he said that was all right. But they, they take all the different, they don't represent any particular people or group, but they try to give the IUB all of the, uh, sides to each issue from a legal standpoint. There are peop, there are ca, cases that people are bringing that are using the legal argument that I was making, but they aren't making it from the methanol side of it. They are going to consider making that one of their points that they make to the IUB. And I think it would be wise if, as you go through this legal process, you keep them updated. I know you have confidentiality, but they're, they would, they would help make that case at the IUB for you. I'll send you that number later. Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none, any board concerns?
I was hoping that Lauren was going to stay, but he bowed out. But I was over at his place yesterday. Uh, he called me yesterday and then last week as well. And I went out and stopped and looked at his road, and I talked to him, and I did not find the dirt, um, on the road that he, uh, that he spoke of. But I would like to say, um, that, and I know we're in the middle of this gravel road revitalization project currently, but there is kind of a sentiment out in the county where you have, whether they're farmers, acre owners, or whatever, that say, raise my taxes, better fund secondary roads. And it's kind of where we were with the gas tax in Highway 20, what was that, seven, eight years ago, whenever that was? You know, the same thing. You know, we opposed raising taxes, but then there was this upswell, people saying, no, raise my gas tax, get the darn roads fixed, let's move forward. So I just wanted to, um, point that I actually, I told Lauren, I said, you know, feel free, you know, 4:30 every Tuesday, you can come to a supervisor's meeting and, and, you know, state your piece, and I, I will give him credit, he, he came today. But, uh, I think that, uh, as we continue to put this rock out and get this base up, I think that will help. But once that product is done, I think we need to look at making sure the secondary roads has the funding that they need, because I think some of the equipment and some of those purchases that we're making, we're doing very cheaply. And there's a difference between cheap and frugal, right? We want to be frugal, but I think oftentimes we end up being cheap. So, um, that was just, uh, what I wanted to point out. I hope that Lauren was going to stay, but he didn't, but that's, uh, all that I have, so.
Yeah, I do have, well, one, first is a observation, it appears as though the staff prefers the hard plastic chairs. The second is the, uh, on 16C, you know, we had very little discussion on it, and I think it would have been nice to have Wick here. There was, uh, you know, a requirement that everyone takes the cyber training, every county employee. I assume that means us then as well. But the other thing in there was that, uh, everyone has to say the opinions, opinions expressed are my own in their emails. Is that going to be in a signature? I guess it'd be important to know. Uh, you know, I'd hate for, you know, Mark to email somebody about their mailbox not meeting. You know, I know you mail, but they probably email him back, and then, then he has to email and say, opinions expressed are my own. Well, now they say, oh, that's just his opinion, you know? So I guess.
I don't have that signature block on my email currently for that very reason.
Right. So I guess it would be nice to kind of get an update on what we just voted for and passed today as far as, uh, the information. I don't know if anybody from the WIC, was it Jeremy and Mark now? Matthew and Mark?
Sure, we can get an answer for that.
Matthew and Dan?
Matthew, yeah.
Okay, sorry. I guessed completely wrong.
We got there.
Yeah.
We're three hours and 24 minutes in here, okay?
Yeah. So, but anyway, yeah, it'd be nice to have that.
I'll, I'll get on that, I'll work on that.
Thank you. Any other board concerns? All right.